Good evening. We'll call to order the City Commission meeting for the City of El Dorado for March 20th. First item on our agenda would be an invocation. Pastor John Harms from First Baptist Church, would you lead us in the invocation?
Thank you. I wanted to just give a shout out, or accolades if you will, to your city engineering people. We've been doing some work at our church and Mr. Peachin came out and was just really clear and professional about what needed to happen and our guys really appreciated it and just speaks well that when you hire good people, it makes things go a lot smoother for everyone involved. So just wanted to say thanks to Mr. Rickard and his crew and you all for a job well done on just, again, for professional people in our city.
Thank you.
So I wanted to share scripture kind of in line with that and then I'll open us up and hear prayers. From Philippians, Chapter 2, Verses 3 and 4, it says this, "Do nothing out of selfish ambition or conceit, but in humility consider others more important than yourselves. Everyone should look out not only for their own interests, but also for the interests of others." And I think, again, I just want to say thank you all for looking out for our interests as citizens here in El Dorado. So gotta meet Mr., I didn't catch your last name, I'm sorry.
Dilner.
Dilner, alright, so I look forward to you serving our community as well and us being a blessing to you also, hopefully, so alright, let's pray. Father, thank you for a beautiful day today, a new beginning of spring. Thank you for continuing new beginnings in our community as well and Father, just we pray for your guidance and direction. Thank you for the leaders that you have placed over us. May we be, all be citizens of integrity, may we be a city of integrity as well and again, we just thank you for the blessings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda, I guess, is proclamations and personal appearances having none. We'll move to public comment. This portion of our agenda allows public comment. Does anybody from the public wish to address the commission? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number two on our agenda, which would be consent agenda. Consent agenda has minutes. Business from our previous meetings, this was sent out to...
Why is Buffalo requesting CMB?
Their cast fry is next Friday and they use that as a fundraiser.
To their athletic department, yeah, they do an annual, I think maybe 10-plus years they've been doing it there at the 4H building.
Okay. I move that consent agenda has presented be approved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and second, any further discussion? Favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Next item on our agenda would be a recommendation from Sales Tax Committee.
Thank you. We had some pretty in-depth discussions this year on the excess sales tax committee and I think we have some good recommendations that we came up with for you. The total allocation was $523,404.24. We're gonna recommend the additional property tax reduction of $288,277.49. We're gonna recommend approving the new library computers. We recommend approving the Main Street facade grant, continuing with that. USD 490, would like to put in a fitness trail that would be available to the public during reasonable hours. And this is not a full funding for their full request, it's a parcel. They also asked for some fitness equipment, which we did not approve and we're assuming that they will take care of that over time. That's for $16,000. We're recommending that, replacing the East Park Shelter for $25,000. The Grand Park restroom, basketball court and shelter for $60,000. River View parking upgrades for $30,000. The Summit Shelter for $20,000. The Library Playground for $40,000. And also, if we come in under budget with any of those projects, we'd like to give, or I guess our recommendation would give the city staff the ability to allocate those saved funds to other projects as they see fit. Another note, the committee would like to recommend that if the Elks Lodge does not have a construction date by next year's first sales tax meeting, that the $55,000 that has been previously allocated but not issued would be placed back in the excess sales tax funds for other allocations. The reason for that is, it's kind of been a long time in the works and we feel like that money should be used and it's not right to hold that money for an indefinite amount of time. So we feel like there could be improvements made right away, so we'd really like to see a construction date set from one year from now to hold those funds. And then, last note, I'm gonna bring Josh Hall up here with me and he's gonna explain some McDonald's Stadium improvements that we'd like to see as well.
I know with the Parks and Rec Master Plan, one thing that we've always, you know, we had some people with the Hall of Fame come to us and ask us for money and there's, we felt there was more dire needs at McDonald's Stadium than to give them money to help with the museum. So we were kinda wanting to see, you know, McDonald's Stadium was not part of the whole Parks and Rec Master Plan, so we were wanting to implement that into the Parks and Rec, the Parks and Rec Master Plan as far as re-turfing the entire outfield and also doing a new fence and going back to the original double-stacked fence and have the city to where we can advertise up there, to where we can, you know, sell ads, ads to businesses here in town and, you know, whether it be $2,000 for the initial cost and also have them pay an extra whatever per year after that to keep it up there. And in doing that, if it wasn't part of the Master Plan, you know, maybe if there's a way where we could bond it out, because obviously McDonald's Stadium is a vital part of this community and it kind of takes a backseat to everything else and we have the Broncos at play here and every year the outfield has gotten redone three or four times and I think a lot of people have seen it's kind of gotten pushed aside. And I would like to see, you know, it would cut a lot of maintenance if we just turf it. I think to turf the entire outfield, the fence and also the bullfins, we're looking at $750,000. Well, if we also have the college and the high school, USD 490, sign contracts for 15, 20 years and say, hey, you're gonna pay us this amount to use our facilities, because it is a city facility. The city really doesn't use it except for the college, USD 490. But there are ways where the city could actually benefit from it and the advertising can be put back into the McDonald's Stadium as far as maintenance going forward. So I just thought that would be, you know, with my stadium, I was a little disappointed that it wasn't part of the whole Parks and Rec Master Plan, but if, you know, that doesn't go through, you know, is there a way we could actually bond it to where we can get it fixed now and get it done?
Okay.
That was kind of a collective opinion from the whole group. So I guess right now I'd like to open it up for questions about any, any of these items.
I have a question. You talked about Grand Park Restrooms, Basketball Court and Shelter for $60,000. Is that actually 60, 20 and 16 for $96,000?
Correct. That is correct, yes. Yes.
So Grand Park is listed with three projects.
Yep. Yep. And we did base those off what we felt were the biggest need of the town right now and kind of some low-hanging fruits that we could get taken care of right away.
Okay.
Anything else?
Is this, does this represent all the projects that staff brought to the commission?
It does not. And even the list we brought to the Sales Tax Advisory Committee was a condensed list. Knowing the dollar amount we had to work with, we tried to keep it as close to that amount as possible.
Okay. Well, thanks. I mean, as I look through the minutes, you're right, pretty good, pretty good discussion and a lot of people attended and I appreciate that. Any further discussion or questions from the commission?
I don't think I have anything at this point.
Okay. Our goal here tonight is to, is to accept or receive, it says accept, recommendations. I kind of assumes that it's going in. I think it's important to me that this, we're receiving your recommendations, but we still got a budget process to go through. We respect your time and everybody's efforts going into this. We want to try and fund it just like you presented, but at the same token, I don't want to presume anything by saying accepting recommendation tonight. I would rather it say, I don't know whether we can change that, we've received the recommendation tonight. I also appreciate all the time. Okay. Thank you very much, Yellen.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussions from the commission? I would like to amend that motion to say receive instead of accept. Is that...
Mr. Mayor, the motion actually reads to accept for consideration.
Okay.
So that it does take into account that we discussed this during...
Consider acceptance. I read that. It's consider acceptance rather than accept, intercept for consideration, so I'll let...
I'll just do it for him about that.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, you'll need to open the public hearing before you can go motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, so at this time we'll open up the meeting for public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to address the commission based on these topics?
I'm Roger Hudson with the Elks Lodge. We appreciate the two years that we got those allotments given to us for this new building that we're trying to build. From day one, when we got bought of this sales tax money, I tried to find out how long we had to use this money, how long it would be available. And I believe I called Tammy, I was the first person I talked to about that. I've talked to some of the members that have been on that committee before. I've talked to some former city officials. No one seemed to have an answer for me. And I'll be the first to admit that our fundraising has been slower than we certainly anticipated. We still have money coming in, but how, however, it's coming in slowly. Just last week, we got some money in from a former senator and I've got some more letters out. There are people in this community that have already donated and I've got some more of the promised money and we haven't gotten it yet. We're trying other avenues. We've got a GoFundMe fund set up, the business of Dylan's groceries has been helping us out a little bit. So my question is, how long do we have to use this money? I know the Tax Committee said a year. I don't know if a year will work for us or not. I don't expect to hang on to it forever, obviously, but since I had tried to find out earlier on how long we had to spend this, it's kind of a shock that we have people stand up at that meeting and say, well, we're gonna take that money away from the Elks because they're not doing anything with it. So I'd like to know how long we do have and if that money's still gonna be available.
I don't know that I read to know that answer for you tonight, Roger. That was certainly something we can find out.
I anticipated we were gonna have a work session or something on this and discuss it, because none of us have discussed it amongst ourselves. So that, I agree with Vince. I couldn't answer that tonight, Roger. I anticipate discussion amongst the commission, but it won't be denied.
Sure, I understand that. I know it's a vegetarian item, so...
So, but a valid question too and I think we can try and get an answer for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the commission in public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close, close the public hearing and move on to an accepted motion.
I move to accept for consideration the Sales Tax Advisory Committee's recommendations on the use of uncommitted sales tax for 2016.
Okay, it's been moved and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, everybody, for your answers. Next item on our agenda would be application for special use permit to allow a beauty shop at 809 South Audrey.
This mayor and commissioners, the planning commission held a public hearing on this special use request at their February 23rd meeting. The planning commission recommended approval by six to zero vote. Included in your package tonight are the minutes and staff memos and a map of the location. Beauty shop isn't allowed home occupation within our zoning regulation, regulations. It's been a while since we've had one.
Any other questions from the commission? I entertain a motion.
What's the ordinance number?
G-1241.
Mr. Mayor, I make to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve case number 17-002-SUP, requesting a special use permit to allow a beauty shop in an R1 low-density residential district and that ordinance number G-1241 be approved.
Second.
Okay, so we moved in second, any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next item on our agenda would be to rezone 1,000 East Country Club Lane from OI Office Industrial District to an R1 low-density district.
Yes, Mayor and commissioners, at the same planning commission, the planning commission held a public hearing on, on this case, voted six to zero to recommend approval of the rezone. This is a, what we coin as a downzoning of the property, relies a little more open than R1. R1 is the most restrictive zoning we have in town. The gentleman's intent is to have a single-family home on that parcel. So, you know, he has made the request and we see that it fits within the neighborhood and we're recommending approval as well.
Scott?
Yes?
As I look at this, this is golden living, right?
Yes, correct.
And this is what we're talking about?
The Old Moose Lodge, correct.
What I thought.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Six oh vote from the planning commission to do that.
Ordinance?
G-1242.
Makes sense.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve case number 17-002-REZ, requesting a rezoning of 1,000 East Country Club Lane to an R1 single-family residential district and that ordinance number G-12-42 be approved.
Second. Okay, moved in second, any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Item six, annexation ordinance for USD 490 Grandview Elementary School site.
Mayor and commissioners, the city received a petition from USD 490 requesting annexation of their property where the future Grandview Elementary School is set to be constructed. With that, we're asking you to consider approving the ordinance to allow that parcel of land to be annexed within the city.
Okay. Any questions from the commission? We've been anticipating this for a while, I think. I will be abstaining from this vote, Tabitha. Alright, I entertain a motion. Need a, win you an ordinance number?
G-1243.
Okay.
I move that ordinance number G-1243 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Motion carries three. I will point abstention. Item number seven would be the application for special use permit to allow educational institution at 2702 North Country Club Road, now officially part of the city limits.
Correct. The planning commission also reviewed this case at their February 23rd, 2017 meeting, recommended approval by five to zero vote. What this does, it'll bring in, now that the property's annexed, it's at our most restrictive zoning, which is R1, and the special use permit will allow a school to be constructed on that side.
The map?
Yes.
Wildcat Way is south of the middle school?
Wildcat Way is south of the middle school, correct.
Okay, so the middle school's up here somewhere?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Yep. The, yeah, well, it does show Wildcat Way on there, yeah.
Is that, I assume 1244, Tab?
Yes.
Alright, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve case number 17-001-SUP, requesting a special use permit to allow an educational institution in an R1 low-density residential district and that ordinance number 1244 be approved.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any further discussion? Tabitha will be abstaining from this one as well. Roll call.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Motion passes three, goes to zero with one abstention. Next on our agenda is naming of a street. We've been kicking this around for a while. We had a suggestion only to find out that it already has been used. It's too bad.
And I apologize about that. I heard that mentioned last meeting and I clicked in my head and then I went and did a little digging and we do have a street currently platted, although not built or constructed, named Eagle Drive, so...
Okay. It's as good as built when it's on the plan and named.
Yeah, it's on the plan. It's dedicated right away to the city of El Dorado.
Okay, so we need to have discussion on what we would like.
So let's try Veterans or Legion.
Or stadium. I'll add Stadium Drive to that list.
No, we have enough stadium.
That was shot down.
Yes, thank you.
They wasted a second issue.
Well, you can be outvoted.
That's true, I can be.
Not me.
Not a wise man, but of course you can do that.
Chicken.
I'll, I'll, yeah. So say I'll be honest, I don't have strong feelings, I guess, either way.
I don't either. Those are, if those, either one of those fit in there, that's fine, I may go with Legion Drive. Is that okay with everybody?
Which?
Legion Drive.
Okay. My second choice, okay.
Well, you know, convince us otherwise.
Well, no, I mean, that's fine. It's just, I just felt like it needed to be something associated with veterans and the American Legion and stadium doesn't do that.
No, it doesn't.
But that would be okay, that would be an awful lot...
Caught by the foot.
Okay, what's to wish the commission?
I'm cool, like I said, that sounds good to me.
I can make a motion. I'll make a motion of Legion Drive.
Okay.
What ordinance?
1245.
So I will make the motion that we, make a motion that ordinance number G-1245 and ordinance changing the name of a certain street in the City of El Dorado be approved to Legion Drive.
I'll second that, just for you.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Badway?
Second.
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yeah, yeah.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is new business. Chance now to bring new, for the commission to bring new items of discussion up or talk about some of the work and committees we've been, we've been working on the past couple weeks. So anybody want to start?
I'll go ahead and start with Parks and Rec. We met last Wednesday, welcomed new members to the advisory board as we incorporated the Tree Board into the Parks and Rec. So we gained two more people. On Harbor Day is April 28th and there are posters out in the main entry that won the award for Plant a Tree Day. We talked about the Disc Golf Course and how it was coming along. We talked about the El Dorado Half Marathon, which is on April Fool's Day and a dollar of the entry fee goes to USD 490. So if you haven't checked into that, do so. Again, Oz is handling it and as of last Wednesday, they had 300 entries, so they're up from last year. The weekend of March 30th is the Storybook Walk in the Park and it's also National Take a Walk Day. And up at North Main Park, there will be sandwich boards that tell us a story as you go around from sandwich board to sandwich board and it's open from like 5:30 till 7:00. Good thing for the kids, come and go, but, you know, read the story all the way through. We talked about the end of winter sports, the beginning of spring sports, which is soccer. They're already having soccer practice. They're already having soccer practice. I think they start games on Saturday, this coming Saturday. Think that's all my notes. Oh, nope, the back, right on every available space. Mother and son bowling was his past weekend. Coaches. I think I mentioned this last time we talked about sports. We have 28 soccer teams. 14 of those teams are coached by someone who does not have a child playing. 13 either work for the city or have a connection to the city. So we need coaches, and it would be a crying shame to have to cancel a team because we can't find people to coach these kids, and we certainly don't want to do that. So step up.
God, I'm over it.
Airport meets next month. That would be it.
You covered mine, so I don't have anything to add.
Prairie Trails had a meeting, and I'll just say it's...I took a little trip last week, and it's really good to be home.
Tell them why you say that.
Because I didn't like where I went.
All right, well, let's chop this up. New business that I have, go through a few things we've been working on. El Dorado Inc. has got a meeting coming up this week. Last week was the Chamber Annual Meeting, which was pretty well attended and I think a good success. Chance to see what the Chamber's got planned in their upcoming year of work, and it's pretty exciting to see some new initiatives and just some energy in the Chamber, so I really, really appreciate that. The Chamber also hosted a legislative forum on a Saturday morning, and it actually was a great chance to talk with Bruce Gibbons and Mary Martha Good, our representative and senator. And I will say that it was nice to have what felt like a dialogue instead of just a preaching to us about what's going on. So it was...we really appreciate their efforts up there. They've got a tough job, so...and we certainly shared some things that we'd like for them to pay attention to, and I know they heard us because of we went out there until they said that they heard us. It was a good morning. Glad the Chamber hosted that. And that's...REAP, as a part of REAP, their meetings coming up, these meetings seem to be right after we have a city commission meeting, but that's ongoing in my...on what I do. And Main Street has got a...their annual meeting coming up next week, and that's an evening social gathering, and then in the, I think at noon time, at the El Dorado Theater, once was the El Dorado Theater, Hot Rod Cafe it's called now, I guess, going to have some informational meeting about their historic tax credits and historic districts downtown. So if you've got property in the downtown area, it would be good to hear about some opportunities. There's plenty to say, plenty to share there.
And Mayor, that starts at 11:00 a.m.
At 11?
11:00 a.m. at Hot Rods.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
And on top of that, I'll be speaking about downtown drainage and where we're at on that study, have maps available to show those folks, and we'll talk about where we're at in that. And I think there's some other topics they have as well.
That'll be great. Thank you, Scott. Any else for new business? Seeing none, we'll move to city manager's report.
I have a few...
Two weeks, you should have a whole list of things, right?
I kind of do, yeah. Just, first of all, a few informational items. The El Dorado Correctional Facility will be sponsoring operational home run on April 5th. This is an emergency operations training that will incorporate several tactical response teams from state correctional facilities. I think El Dorado and El Zorro were the two primary ones, along with the Kansas Air National Guard and the Butler County Emergency Services. This will begin about noon on the 5th of April, and so if you see any Blackhawks flying around, rest assured that it is related to that correctional facility exercise and not something else. In addition to that, we have a lot of air traffic in our airspace. On March 24th, West Star is going to be conducting some helicopter inspections for their main transmission lines. They informed us that it would be from, anytime from sunup to sundown, they'll be looking at those lines, so if you see a helicopter flying around on March 24th, it's West Star checking out those lines. In addition, we also have a number of applicant...or advisory boards that will need applicants. I'm gonna run through the list real quickly. If you know of someone that might be interested, encourage them to submit an application to Tabitha. We have three spots that are appointed by the city commission for the Board of Appeals. We have one for the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have five for the CTC.
Convention and Tourism Committee?
Convention and Tourism Committee. Two for El Dorado Inc. that are appointed by the city commission. We have three for the library, two for the plant...three for the Planning Commission, I'm sorry. Two for Prairie Trails, and we have three for the Recreation Advisory Board, and we've received...I'm sorry, we have five for the Recreation Board, but we've received three applications for that...for that board. And we'd like to have those applications due back by April 2nd so that we can get those ready for you guys to look at and review. So if you get...if you know of anybody that would be interested, please encourage them to submit those or contact us and get those information, get the information to them. And then, kind of a couple of things for maybe a little bit of a discussion. For the work session on April 12th, we have a couple of items. We will have the equipment replacement program and the capital improvement program that are proposed for the upcoming budget year for presentation and discussion. In addition to that, we've had some internal discussion about starting to market the disc golf course, so we wanted to kind of talk about what a name might be for that, whether that be El Dorado Disc Golf Course or something else. I know we do have a policy for naming recreation facilities, so that might be something we need to discuss and get on the table before too long so we can have a brand for that, especially since we want to have that ready to go in July as we have crowds coming to town. And then finally, I emailed out to you, wasn't included in the packet, but I emailed out to you a memo with some proposed changes to the commission agenda, just from an outsider's perspective, looking in with some ideas of modifying the agenda, so to speak. For the most part, most of the meeting would be retained as it is, but I thought that there were maybe a couple of ways that we could enhance the meeting and make it flow a little smoother. Of course, that was based on one sample size, and I understand that one sample population is not indicative of everything, but one thing that we...that the commission could consider is utilizing the consent agenda, and I noticed that there were a couple of items on the consent agenda that could be defined as administrative items, for example, a CMB permit. These things could be added to the consent agenda where they're more administrative, and that would free up some space for items that would be...would require more discussion or more conversation, I suppose. So that's one thing, and it looks like maybe some of that already takes place to some degree. Proportions and recriminations continue as is. And then, just kind of making sure that people understand the differences between public comments and public...or personal appearances. Personal appearances would be a special opportunity for folks within the community to schedule an appearance in advance, and we would just place on the agenda instructions for how to do that, so that they would know in advance, and get to contact the city clerk ahead of time and get on the agenda. And the other thing that we would communicate as part of that is any presentation to be for informational purposes only, and that the commission would take that action up, or that discussion up, rather, as part of a work session for a future meeting. I don't know if you guys do work sessions very often, but one thing that I've noticed for the other communities is having a work session to discuss items on the agenda, kind of a preview, if you will, an informal question and answer session, get familiar with items, and then when you come to the actual meeting, you don't have to hash all those questions and thoughts out as part of the meeting. And what that does, it allows really more for a dialogue between someone that's requesting some action and the city commission, lies to get your information and get your questions answered, so that when you come to the meeting, you're ready to rock and roll with an action. So that's one thing that I had on there. And then, kind of just a difference between old business and new business. Old business would probably be an item that would not be used very often, but in the event that there's action that is tabled, maybe due to the need for additional information or for some other reason, that item could be scheduled for old business as opposed to being under new business. And that way, if there is an item that needs follow-up, we don't want to make...we don't want to make...we want to make sure that it doesn't get dropped, so that way it'll be scheduled for a future meeting in our old business. The information can be gathered, and then it can be...action can be taken and it can be removed, so it kind of keeps it in front of the commission, so to speak, as that information is cleaned. And then new business, the way that would work is items that are new or have not been yet considered by the commission for action would be classified under...or scheduled under new business, and these would be action items so that there'd be defined a period of time for action. And as part of that, one of the things that we've kind of talked about at the staff level is including information for those considerations, to include such things as budgetary impact on a proposal, analysis of an item in relation to the commission's priorities, review of how a proposal may impact operations, and other considerations or information that would be useful in the decision-making process. And as part of that transition, really, from a personal appearance to action, part of the benefit of that is if a group wants to come to the commission and make a request by pushing it to a work session, that information can be developed by staff so that at that work session, the commission can have a full representation of what that information looks like prior to making a decision. So that's the key thing. And then finally, reports, that would be the opportunity where the commission would have an opportunity to bring reports up from appointed boards and commissions or other bits of information that the commission is going to share with the community. That's basically it, but I think that by incorporating some of these features, may provide the commission an opportunity to get additional information where necessary to aid and benefit in the decision-making process. So I don't know if any of that appeals to you, but it would be something that we'd be happy to help with.
David and I talked about some potential changes, and he said he had some recommendations, and I had asked him to simply document those, write them down, and we can, as a commission, decide about how we want to change our agenda. Certainly open to change when it makes sense. Thank you, David, for putting this out, and we...the intent of this is now, and we've been emailed this as well, all right?
Yes, sir.
We can talk about it at a work session, and I don't know that this is an action item, it's just a change we decide to do or not. Okay?
And then the only other thing I had, I didn't know if anyone had any other topics that would like to schedule for...or include, rather, on the April 12th work session.
We've got a long work session started there, and I think we have SDI in that...
We...I think we've already decided to move that to another date, so if you guys...
Thank you. I think we...
Will provide us another date.
We talked about it, but I don't know whether this commission can believe in it. I think we...I think it'd be wise, otherwise we're here for a long day. Remind me again what those topics are on the work session coming up?
You've got your advisory board items, your CIP ERP, and the disc golf course.
We're going twice then, okay? Thank you.
Just a clarification for the agenda, the...there is no executive session, so that was a mistake that we had on the agenda, so we don't actually need one.
Well, we've been holding that as an item just in case. Actually quite pleased to say we don't need one, so...I'm sorry.
Well, we do.
So, okay. Anything else to bring before the commission? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries forward to zero. We are adjourned. Thank you.